These meeting for Saint Petersburg College is now underway. And where did Mr. Gibbons go?
Whoops, Devon stepped out.
Well, he was gonna do the invocation. Hopefully, he's just going to get water. Let's give him a moment. While he's on his way back, I do have a note here. There are campus tours available, I assume, immediately after the board meeting. I don't know who or where to meet, but.
Marvin will.
Marvin will take care of that. And the other note that I have here is on June twenty first, our next board meeting at the epicenter. We're gonna have a reception at eight thirty for Mr. Bob Fine on that date, so June the twenty first. Everybody stand please for the invocation and pledge.
Dear Lord, we thank you for another day. We thank you for safe travels and safe journeys. We especially thank you for our travel to Tarpon Springs. We ask that you bless our drive to and fro. And, Lord, we just thank you for Saint Petersburg College, all that we try to do in the community, Lord, and all that we, our staff and our president and other folks that work, all the folks that work for us, all the things that we get accomplished on a daily basis. Keep our mindset straight. We pray for our government. We pray for all the cities that we try to help throughout Pinellas County. We pray for our staff. We pray for the board members, Lord, that we guide this college as well as we can. Lord, I pray in your name, and in whose name you may pray. Amen.
Blessed are we, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Let's see, on the preliminary matters, I don't believe we have any retirement resolutions this morning that are present. So first on the agenda, under recognitions and announcements, Clearwater Campus Partnership with the Helen Gordon Davis Center for Women, Dr. Hogan and Ms. Madsen.
Good morning to the board.
Good morning.
President Law. It is with pleasure that I introduce to you Mrs. Anne Madsen, who is the Executive Director of the Helen Gordon Davis Women's Center.
Good morning. Good morning, Dr. Law. Good morning to the members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's really a privilege for me to come and talk about the Helen Gordon Davis Center for Women, which is a unique nonprofit founded forty years ago to help women to succeed personally and professionally. I am particularly pleased that we have really strengthened our workforce development programs. One of our core programs is employment services to help women to prepare for and find jobs. Under that program, we have a program called Displaced Homemakers, and last year we received a grant for one point three million, one point two million dollars to help displaced homemakers. It made me think that there was more that we could do in Pinellas County. So I reached out to Dr. Law, and we have formed a partnership with Saint Petersburg College to help expand our reach, to help students, and to introduce members of the community to the services that we provide. Those services include helping with resume writing, job skills, interviewing, but more than that, it's about helping with life skills, to help women and men who have lost their primary source of income and need that extra care to find and be prepared for jobs. So thank you, Dr. Law. It's a pleasure to be here, and it's an honor to work for Saint Pete College.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, comments?
Sorry, I think Suzanne, you have some.
I do.
Some items. Okay, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves here.
Well, no, that's the monthly report.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So comments, the only, only comments I have this morning are related to some of the change in the agenda for this morning. I'm gonna have to leave early, so we're gonna move a couple of items up. The Gibbs item is gonna be moved up to after the monthly reports, as well as Dr. Law's review comments. And then once, once that happens, I'll be kinda taking off, and Ms. Westine will take over at that point. Any comments from any of the board members?
I have a couple. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, one of which is, I was glad to see a good turnout for the graduation. It was a very well-attended event by the trustees, as well as, we had over two thousand people graduate, but a thousand or so, twelve hundred showed up. It was a very, very nice event, and I think that we did a great job. You all should be commended, and we should be very proud of graduating two thousand, two thousand students. That's a lot. That's a huge impact on this county and this, in this region. And then, secondly, I just wanted to thank the young lady for coming from the Helen Gordon Davis Foundation. She's gone already, but she was a heck of a legislator, a strong fighter for women and minorities, and she definitely has been missed, but she was a very, very good legislator for this region. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
I've got a couple of comments.
Thank you.
Real quick, I apologize for being a couple of minutes late today. I got stopped at customs. Thank you to security for getting me through and driving me up to the door. Wonderful, wonderful campus. Got a chance to drive around because I might have come in the wrong entrance, but very beautiful. And to just echo a little bit of what Devon said, that was my first Saint Pete, Saint Petersburg College graduation, and it was very special. I appreciate the trustees' role in that. I thoroughly enjoyed watching young and old alike getting, getting degrees in hand, and the excitement of the job well done. So thank you to the faculty and staff that pour your hearts and souls into our wonderful people, our students, and it shows, so well done.
Mr. Foster, they're doing tours after this, if you want to do one.
Even though you may have already toured.
Three hours.
Dr. Law, any comments?
No, I want to add my thanks to the staff for the work at graduation. It's, it's, there's a lot of moving parts, and once, once it gets set to go, you've gotta get all the way to the finish line in a reasonable time, and I think we, the, the quality of the ceremony now is, is quite pronounced, and I'm very, very pleased. I want to say thanks to the faculty for, there were, there were a lot more faculty than often come to graduation. We, we don't police the matter, but it, it's very rewarding to see the faculty there with the students, and we know the students are gonna come. They, they enjoy the moment, so thank you all for, for that work. Thank you for your attendance, too. It, it makes a difference when the board members are part of the ceremony.
No public comments that I'm aware of. Next item, in your board packet are the minutes from the April nineteenth meeting. Take a motion to approve.
I move approval, Mr. Chairman, of the April nineteenth meeting.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes. Monthly reports, I don't see Mr. Lang here today for the board. Ms. Gardner, any reports?
Yes, good morning. You should have in front of you the two thousand sixteen Legislative Session New Law Summary booklet that was put together. It's a compilation of some selected summaries from the legislative session that impact the Florida college system and particularly the college, and there's some summaries of the, the bills that passed. And there's also some summaries, some, for some of the bills that did not pass this session, but had a lot of dialogue and discussion on them. So if you wanted to go through, take a look at it. If there's any questions, please let us know. This booklet will be posted electronically on the board's website with electronic live links to each of the, to each of the different laws, so you can look at them that way as well. And there's also a cover sheet where I've just highlighted just some of the, the highlights from the session and some of the bills that passed.
Very nice. Any questions? Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Lang has joined us.
Let's see, and Mr. Lang has joined us here. Any reports for this month?
Yes, Beltar Road, every light is bad.
Besides that, the law's good.
Besides that, all's perfect.
Perfect. All right, the Faculty Governance Organization, Dr. Mercandante.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair, board members, Dr. Law. I'm Rich Mercandante, President of the Senate, and I appreciate the opportunity to share with you a brief report from FGO. As I mentioned back in February, FGO continues to have a good working relationship with the administration, and we're always open to dialogue. Our organization is the official voice of the three hundred and eighty full-time faculty at the college. We place a high value on ensuring that faculty in all departments, all campuses, and all centers have a voice in FGO. We hold monthly campus meetings run by elected faculty leaders who moderate discussions on topics of faculty concern. Also, once a month, the elected faculty senators, about three dozen of us from across the college, meet and discuss issues that might eventually work their way up to becoming recommendations to the college administration, and these meetings are open to all faculty, full-time faculty. We encourage open discussion on any topic of concern in our meetings, and our campus FGO chairs meet regularly with the campus provosts, and the six-member FGO executive board meets with Dr. Law on a monthly basis. Part of our success as faculty leaders is a result of the administration's willingness to listen and work with us in our concerns, and I thank administrators for keeping the lines of communication open. Let me share a recent topic of interest that we will be working on this summer. As many of you know, networking is a key in the business world. When HR professionals are often surveyed about the skills needed for success, two skills that are often developed in SPC student clubs tend to rank very high on their list. Number one, the ability to work with others in teams, and number two, the mastery of communication skills. Over the past year, FGO has been in discussion with the administration on increasing the engagement between faculty and students and campus student clubs. We know that students do best when they stay engaged both inside and outside of the classroom, and we're trying to work on practical ways to get more students and faculty engaged in student clubs. One of our major future goals includes discussions on increasing student success by ensuring that we're doing our part to help out with the mental health needs of our students. At FGO meetings throughout the year, we've discussed the growing national concern that for some students, at least part of the lack of student success has more to do with how well students handle life issues than academic issues. As you know, we do an outstanding job with academic out-of-class support. FGO is now discussing ways in which we can offer students more support in handling the ups and downs of life, especially when those issues negatively impact their academic performances. At our most recent faculty senate, the recommendation was made that we set up a collaborative lab this summer where students, faculty, and administrators can talk about ways to increase both the quantity and quality of mental health resources for our students. So in conclusion, I'm pleased to have this time to speak before you. As always, my door is always open, and I hope that you always feel free to contact me. I would be glad to respond to any questions.
Any questions?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mercandante.
Next, Career Service Employee Council, Ms. Golly.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. I'm Mary Jo, Mary Jo Golly, and I'm the current Chair for the Career Service Employee Council, representing over six hundred of the college's employees. I'm, I'm here to give you an update on some of our recent accomplishments. We have given out three Titan Awards, and they were announced in April after a blind selection process of a hundred and twenty-seven qualified nominations. The awards were given out during the Career Service Employee Recognition Luncheons being held this month. We currently had the Retiree Emeritus Luncheon, Emeritus Luncheon, excuse me, in February, and we recognized ten retirees from Saint Petersburg College for their outstanding service and the time that they spent here working hard. The Career Service Employee Growth Plan is continuing on its path. The supervisory training is complete, and right now, Human Resources is completing the Career Service Employee Training. In progress, we're working on the nominations for the new Career Service Employee Members. The nomination will be sent out at the end of May, and we will be recruiting new Career Service Steering Committee members for the next two-year term. Right now, we have our Career Service Employee Recognition Luncheons going on right now for all sites. They are there to recognize about three hundred and twenty Career Service Employees who have completed their twenty-four professional development units, and that's to prior, for a deadline of June thirtieth. This isn't a required requirement for them. It's something that they can do and are urged to complete on their own, so this is very exciting. We have an update on the Titan Award. We went through the nomination process, and we're going to tweak it a little bit. We're going to review the nomination survey, the selection process, and the number of awards given in the future years to improve the fairness. Right now, we have decided that one award should be given for each represented area of the Career Service Employee Council, so one will be given out for student support, administrative support, and facilities support. We're working on the onboarding guides. The compilation of the data for the whole year is put together, and we're going to create these guides for the new incoming members for the next year. And that concludes, concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, this is where we make a little change in the agenda. Mr. Wechter, gonna talk a little bit about Gibbs.
So that is item C sixty-two A.
Yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Law. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you and give you a first glance of our plans to get started with the Student Success Center at the Saint Pete Gibbs Campus. Provost Connor will introduce the physical activity that's getting ready to start on the campus, and then I'll wrap it up with a discussion of how we plan to get that work done with an action item regarding the delivery method thereof. Provost Connor.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Law. As a refresher, this is a look at the entire Saint Petersburg Gibbs Campus, and you can see the administration building that we're talking about is down in the southeast corner of the campus, so it's right there at the corner of Sixty-sixth Street and Fifth Avenue. This building was built in the nineteen forties, and with the project comes several challenges, not one being moving all of our student services and the individuals to other parts of the campuses, but we're also keeping part of this building, and then also a lot of the infrastructure, both technology and utilities, run through this building across the rest of the campus. So for that reason, we're proposing a phased approach. So for the first phase, we would look at taking down the east wing, which you can see in green. This has the least amount of utilities impacted to do at first, and also the least amount of individuals that would be moved, and then you can see there's a, an off-site building that's not connected that would come down as well. So that would be the first phase. And then the second phase would be taking down the west side of the wing. That's where the majority of our student services are, and many of the utilities would then have to go away and be moved across other areas of the campus. So that's going to leave this central part of the building, which is what's going to remain. That includes the Music Center, restrooms for the Music Center, and then the historic part of the building that we'll work on, we will be keeping, and we'll work on designing what we're gonna be doing with that. And so then we'll be working with the architects and the designers on the new building. Right now, we haven't yet decided, in this phase, the new building could go on the west side of the piece that's being kept. What's really good about that side is it's very close to the rest of the campus. For the students, that's very accessible and really flows with the campus. However, placing it on the east side of the Music Center and Historic Area puts it right there on the corner of Sixty-sixth Street and Fifth Avenue, which is definitely an iconic piece for our campus. And so that would all be fleshed out during the design process and working with the architects.
We have an opportunity to get this money encumbered pretty quickly because at last September's board meeting, this board approved the prequalification of some architects and some contractors to do small projects. So our plan is this for the early scope, phases one and two. We will use those pre-qualified architects, select one of our three that were pre-qualified, to do phases one and two, the underground utility infrastructure relocation, and then selective demolition of the building. We will dole that work out to our small contractors, the scope of which their scopes are limited to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we'll, we'll, we'll phase that work quickly, and the selective demolition will occur by one or two, or maybe as many as three of those small contractors. That'll allow us to get started right away with phases one and two, utility relocation and selective demolition. Simultaneous to that, and what our action item this morning is, is to select the delivery method with which we want to do the design and construction of the new building. Obviously, there's ten million dollars available to us on July one. We'll encumber a little bit of that using for, for phases one and two, but the big part is we want to advertise and select either a design-build contractor or a construction manager at risk delivery method. You have before you the RFQs for either method. We can have an open discussion about which one we prefer, ask for approval to approve that RFQ, and we'll get it advertised very, very quickly. There are advantages, disadvantages to both, but I open the point, at this point, discussion about your thoughts there, please.
I'll start, 'cause I do have an opinion. I think, you know, kinda my opinion on this is that, you know, where we're at in this, a little bit different than where we were with, with Midtown and, at this point in time, is that I think from a synergy standpoint and constructibility standpoint, I'm really thinking this probably lends itself more to a design-build type of, type of situation than, you know, handling it separately with an architect and then separately with the construction-at-risk contract like we did Midtown. I think with those working together, I think we have the opportunity to maybe save some money, save some efficiencies, maybe some constructibility opportunities with that upfront while the architect is doing their thing and the GC is kinda overseeing all of that, rather than handling it as two separate independent type operations. Just my experience, you know, kinda when you're getting into a project kind of in, you know, out in front, I guess, and, and where we are today, those tend to work better than trying to work separately towards an end. And that's just, that's my opinion based on my experience with, with some fairly large projects, that when you can get in upfront and do a design-build, you end up with a better product in most cases. They still have to be managed, there's still a lot of moving parts, but they just get handled and built better and more efficiently done that way, rather than handling it in two separate, two separate phases, I guess. So that's just my opinion of this, and, and Ms. Westine.
Can you help me understand, what is the architect's role in demo and utilities?
The architect's role, well, the, the biggest phase, honestly, is they subcontract a mechanical contract, or mechanical engineer, mechanical engineering firm. They have to design where and how we're gonna relocate the incoming electrical feed that feeds that building. They have to design and relocate the telecommunications and all of the chill water lines that come into that building. So a lot of the architects' work in a demolition project is really subcontracted to a mechanical engineer and a civil engineer. Most of the engineering services are subcontracted services of the architect, and that would be, the bulk of their role would be subcontracted to those two entities, civil and, civil and mechanical engineer.
What's our current contract with the architect?
The, the contracts with the pre-qualified architects allows them to design up to a limit of two million dollars of construction value. So clearly, I expect that the entire demolition, phases one and phase two, will probably approach, but probably not eclipse a million dollars. So we would use one architect to do the entire design, and then as he's, as he's designing it, he can assign approximate cost to the, to the demolition and relocation value, and we'll dole it out to those pre-qualified small contractors to deliver those scopes.
What's the benefit of using an architect for, and granted, my experience is very limited, but what's the benefit of using an architect for what I perceive to be more of a GC's job? Like, to me, demo is a GC's job. To me, moving utilities is a GC's job. This is from somebody who doesn't know, and that's why I'm saying it's my perception.
Understood, understood. The perception would be that their role is pretty diminished, but, but in actuality, Ms. Westine, there, there's quite a bit to do. We have to establish lines of demarcation, how we're gonna separate the spaces, how we're gonna block them off, how we're gonna maintain life safety issues, how we're gonna maintain ADA issues, where all these people are gonna go, how we're gonna relocate them. Believe it or not, a demolition package, when you look at it on, on paper, is, is much more extensive than any of us would normally, normally imagine from an architect's perspective.
And I'm, I'm really not trying to be difficult, but how is an architect gonna help where we relocate our peeps, people, sorry?
They can help in the layout of the new.
Working on five hours of sleep.
They can help in the layout of the new space particularly.
Okay, that, now I'm understanding.
To a small, yeah, and we have interior designers that will work with them closely on that.
Now, now I'm understanding better. I would support a, a design-build. I'd support the proposal that, that you all have for phase one and two, but I'm, I would support a design-build and get it done, get it up, get it quickly. There are other, other financing factors that I think are gonna come into play, and we've got a couple of years, and that's it.
I, I have one question about phase one and two. Is there any risk, and again, I, I'm asking because I don't know, is there any risk involved with the demo and the relocation of some of these utilities and some of this infrastructure before we know what the final product is gonna look like? Or is this all a project that, no matter what the final build looks like, has to be done anyway?
Thanks for the question. I don't think there's anyone in this room who has been in those buildings that would not agree that they, they have got to go. We had a Castaldi Report, which is the report that has to be sent to the state recommending demolition before the DOE will approve demolition of a property. That has been done, it's six or eight years old now, those buildings, there, there is no plan that I can imagine that would not include the demolition of those two wings. The Music Center that remains in the center, and as Provost Connor mentioned, the, the administration suite, which may become some type of a conference space in the end, the cornerstone of the campus, actually. The Music Center was renovated about sixteen or eighteen years ago, so it's actually in very, very good shape. But those two wings, the one-story portions, I mean, from the roof down to the foundation, there is nothing that would cause us to not include those in the demolition of a. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Just sitting here listening, Mr. Wechter, and I, I'm with Ms. Westine, and the chair, I think I would be in support of a design-build project, 'cause we need to get going, number one, but I, I have to tell you, the phased approach, I'm not, I'm not a fan of. Spending a million, why are we piecemealing and spending a million dollars? And you're saying that we need to use an architect to help us do demarcation and relocate and some other stuff, right? A builder that hires an architect couldn't do that with you?
Oh, he absolutely could, yes, sir.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause, 'cause the way you said it made it almost seem like they could, that could only be done with an architect.
No, 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 excuse me. The, the, the point there, Mr. Gibbons, is timeliness. We have these guys on contract, and we can encumber an architect literally in twenty-four hours. They're, they're on retainer, not retainer, I'm sorry.
I get that, but a million dollars is a lot of money to be spending on, I, I, I mean.
But it's horizontal development. It's your hor, it's your demo and your horizontal development. I, I, I get it, I had the same concern.
I would, I would prefer, if we're gonna do it, let's pick somebody, my opinion would be, let's get the RFQ or P out. Pick somebody over, give Dr. Law a certain amount of time that, that he needs to get that completed over the summer, maybe, and let's get somebody and get started on knocking off. I don't see where taking a million dollars to do this over the summer would be any different than picking the contractor and letting them get started and doing the same thing, and we could be doing this stuff in the fall.
I think you're losing, I think the, the point is you're losing a hundred and twenty days. But by the time, by the time we, as much as we set a sixty-day limit, everything creeps. So we set sixty days, it turns into one twenty days, not that everybody wouldn't make their best efforts, but it'll creep.
I got you.
I, I, I get it.
That's a good point.
I get it, but demo needs to take place, and horizontal development needs to go.
I would, I would tell you that I, the chairman has been through what, more projects than probably all of us put together over at.
Amen.
At, at Duke Energy and, and where he is now. I'm gonna take his lead on this, but I'm just telling you, my druthers is not to spend a million dollars on doing one part and then coming back. and then coming back and picking somebody else to do the other part. Let's just pick the person and move on, or pick the group, whoever that group is, and move on.
I think where the problem comes in with that, Mr. Gibbons, and I, you know, I think, I think we're gonna spend a million dollars now, we're gonna spend it later to do this, doesn't really matter. And I think while we're going through the selection process for the design-build, this kind of allows us to kinda get on with some other stuff, um, and, and, and possibly, you know, when we're talking about, you know, needing to show some, some activity and needing to show some progress, this may give us the opportunity to kinda show some of that, um, sooner than, than later. 'Cause I think-
I have to trust your judgment on that.
Yeah, if we go through, I, I don't think this is really the critical part. I, I kinda like the phase one and two, and then, and then the phase three piece. The, um, uh, because I don't think it, the phase one and two is really, it is kinda connected, but not really connected to the final product here.
I got you.
My, my other fear is, is that if we rush through the RFP process and the design-build process, we're gonna get-
That would be my major concern.
A word that I was about to say, and I didn't.
With phase one and two and the things that-
I know what you're about to say, a bad product.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Mr. Wechter's outline, that allows us, really, the next couple of months to make sure we select the right contractor to handle the design-build, and while this other stuff is kinda going on in parallel and kinda stays out of the way of it. So that-
Mr. Chair, if, if Dr. Law's all right with that, I would, I will make the motion, um, that, um, we accept this as a design-build prod- uh, project, and also that we move ahead with phase, uh, one, two, and three, as the presidency's fit to move the project along, uh, over the next hundred and twenty days.
Second.
Okay, I've asked Rebecca to, uh, hand out the, the process that we will follow for that selection, and, uh, just so you-
We got a motion.
We gotta get some, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. So Rebecca will hand out the, the process that you can all understand that we will follow for the selection of this design-build firm. Uh, Mr. Gibbons will need to check on your schedule to check your availability for participation on the committee's-
Whenever the president do it, I'll make myself available. This is too, this is a high priority for, uh, the Gibbs campus, this is our biggest campus, so when all you guys set the dates, I will make sure I clear my calendar.
Thank you very much.
So do I chime in now that I want a water feature?
Yeah, take that over the president.
A water feature'd be nice, though, out front.
You asked for that.
So everyone has the, uh, uh, really the procedure that outlines the process that we use to do this, and if you, you can read through here, I'm not gonna read the, the, the whole thing to you, but item three is a, um, uh, I'm sorry, item four. The board may select members to serve on the screening committee and the selection team. We each have the opportunity to select one, um, uh, member of the-
Screening committee.
And, uh, so what I would like to do, or what I'd propose to do on that, is you think about who your person is, and let's come back to the next board meeting, prepared to do that. This is gonna, I'm assuming, Mr. Wechter, you're gonna advertise the, the, the RFP, RFQ.
That'll hit the streets very soon, a couple days.
And it has to be advertised-
Has to be advertised for three successive weeks. So we wanna start right away, and, and then have our pre-submission meeting, and, and it's a timely process, but, but we'll get started right away.
So if you're interested in what that RFQ looks like, it is actually, it's in the board packet, there's two of them in there, there's, uh, but there is one for the design-build, and you can see the criteria. But we each have, uh, the opportunity to put one person on that screening committee, and what I'd like to do is come back. I mean, if you have it sooner than that, you could probably send it to, uh, to, to Mr. Wechter.
Probably, you need to send it to Dr. Law.
Send to me. Or send it to, to Dr. Law, and, um, the sooner the better, but at the latest, at the next board meeting.
What are the credentials of the folks that you look for? Or, or is there a criteria set?
I'm not sure there's a criteria. I think it needs to be somebody that has some community familiarity, some, uh, maybe some kinda stake in, uh, what we're doing here.
So it can be someone outside the college community?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Civic leader.
Civic leader, community leader, someone like that, somebody, businessperson in the community, something like that, so. And then you can read down through here, all the instructions are in here, sir.
I have one question, Mr. Chair. Are we, and I know that Dr. Law and I talked about this, are we going to keep the minority aspect piece in there for, uh, for, yeah, for the, okay.
It is in there, thirty points.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure.
It, it's still, it is in there.
I think that should be a standard for all of them, not just this, this particular building, but all of them. I think that should be a big piece, but I just wanted to make sure that we-
That's in there.
Continue that. I know that Dr. Law and I talked about that that would happen, but I wanted to make sure, that's all. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, why don't we, um, why don't I take time after the meeting to, to, uh, walk the new members through how the process works? We, good experience comes from bad experience. We, we, we had some bad experiences along the way. This, this process works really well now. If, uh, it doesn't burden anyone, people come, it's tidy, they get to express, uh, their opinion as to the, the, the best proposals, and they make a recommendation, they're not on the line for it. And then the, uh, the board representative and the president interview the, the finalist firms and make the recommendation then to the full board. So it's, it's very tidy, it's-
It works so well, Dr. Law, that most colleges are using it now. I was down with Ava Parker yesterday, and she was telling me that she liked our process down at Palm Beach State, and they're starting to utilize it as well, so.
Perfect.
Good. All right. Thank you, as you know, we, we, we're, we're moving forward and, and holding our breath a little bit. You know, we're, we've got half the money, and the guidance from our friends who are elected officials are to keep this project moving. Don't give anyone a chance to back up on it, and we are trying to be as dutiful as we can to keep the pressure on everybody as part of it. So this is a very big step today, thanks, I think we're, it, it reflects very well on our commitment. Thank you.
All right, and now we're gonna move to, uh, kinda jump ahead to item eight, which is, um, the president's, um, uh, evaluation. And what I have is, is a, more or less a prepared statement. We went through the process, each of the board members, uh, evaluating Dr. Law, um, really kind of against the strategic objectives of the college and kinda the, um, his performance for this year, and so I'm gonna read through this, uh, this statement. And, uh, I think it, it pretty, pretty well coalesces everything into, you know, what we did. During the month of June, Dr. Law will have completed his sixth year as the president of St. Petersburg College. As required, it is the responsibility of the board to perform an annual review and evaluation of his performance over the past year. Board members have had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Law individually and to complete a written evaluation assessing his performance. The categories were reviewed, we reviewed, included, but were not limited to, leadership, diversity initiatives, budgeting, board relations, and external relations. I have had the opportunity to review all of the evaluations and am pleased to report that they are once again exemplary. His charge when hired included strengthening the college core mission, renewing community and school district relationships, advancing technology advancement, enhancements, facilities enhancements, and support and development of our employees. Dr. Law has provided strong leadership in the fulfillment of these goals. The college continues to be recognized for its focus on student support and student success. National recognition for our student-centered culture gives us great pride in the work we are doing. Increasingly, our students are moving beyond the classroom in engaged learning. All employees now have professional growth plans to strengthen their individual effectiveness. The college and its processes run on an efficient and effective basis. In, in view of Dr. Law's superior performance as chairman, I would like to move that we extend his employment contract an additional year as we did the last several years. This one-year extension would be added on to his existing three-year contract, thereby in extending his employment agreement with the college to June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. While our review is limited to the performance of the president, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the tireless efforts of all the faculty and staff. Dr. Law continues to praise our staff and has even acknowledged how wonderful it is to work with this team of professionals. On behalf of the board, we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, do I need to make a motion?
I think I made the motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I do, I do have one comment on that, is that okay?
Perfect.
This is getting harder and harder to do every year, I feel like, um, don't tell my dad I said this, but every time I meet with Dr. Law, I feel like I've been to church on Sunday, um, 'cause we sit there and tend to challenge each other to be better. You know, um, Dr. Law, let me say this. I feel like, uh, you know, a lotta folks hear me at these meetings, they talk about diversity, we talk about a lotta things, but I, the, at the end of the day, I feel like we always get the best person for the job. I appreciate that, 'cause it's not always, it's about having diversity, but it's also about being able to deliver, right? At the end of the day, we have to deliver services to our clients, and we gotta do it at a very, very high level. There was nothing wrong with our predecessor, right, with your predecessor, there was nothing wrong. We built a lotta buildings, we did a lotta good things. I feel like after you got here, though, Dr. Law, we have been focused like a laser beam on making sure that students, at every level, from very basic all the way up to the highest, um, uh, mothers, fathers, sisters, nephews, right out of high school, whoever, we have been focused on making sure that they're successful. And you should be commended on that, 'cause we do a very, very good job of that. We make sure people get what they need to be effective in the workforce and get into the workforce. And I feel like with the highest confidence, I could go anywhere, and I do, all the time, I know you know that, that I tell people all the time, that St. Pete College, to me, is the best community college in the country because we focus on making sure our students are, have the whole picture, they get everything that they need to be successful. Do we do that in every program? Probably not, but we're good at it, we're very, very good at it, and I think we could be a model for the rest of the country, and I thank you for doing that. I, I really mean this, this is getting harder to do, because every year I challenge you on something, and every year, we get better at it, right? We may not be the experts on it in one year, but we get better at it, and I appreciate you, uh, taking that counsel and advice, and you take pretty good counsel from the board. I feel like when the board gives you an objective to knock down something, you go and knock it down. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments?
I don't know what happened to mine, but before this, has this been submitted to the state?
Not yet.
Okay, before it's submitted to the state, I, I wanna submit my, my, uh, my scores, so it can be reflected and I sign this. I've known Dr. Law since he got here, I was the newly-elected mayor of, uh, Dr. Law, in St. Petersburg, in Tallahassee. Was a, as an outsider, as a new mayor of a city that thrives on its education, outsider looking in at the selection process. It was a very interesting process, I hear this, this guy, who had been in St. Pete, goes to Tallahassee, guy that wears bow ties and, uh, comes back to St. Pete, but he met with me and, uh, put my mind at ease, in a relatively swift fashion. It took the reins and we did a lot, we did a lot, from, uh, really, uh, making sure that we had a thriving downtown campus to, uh, a brand-new Midtown campus and, and all of the efforts that he put into St. Petersburg and Tartan Springs. Just, uh, and, and with his focus on, uh, people getting a quality education and, and, uh, in fields where there are jobs, that we don't have, uh, degreed students, and I know we probably have some, but it's not the aspiration, but we, we don't have that many degreed students looking amber, and I think, uh, I think they're in their chosen field, and that's a testament from the top down, and, uh, so, Dr. Law, I, I thank you for what you've done in this county, for this county.
Any other comments?
Real briefly, um, Dr. Law, your reputation precedes you. One of the reasons I was most excited to be a part of this great institution, in more ways than just being a graduate, is because of some of the things I heard about you in the community and what you had done with SPCs since you got here. I'm excited to, to learn more as I am on the board, and, uh, shadowing what Devron said, I'm excited to be able to challenge each other, I hope. You know, my, my wish, my hope is that as a younger person sitting up here, I bring a slightly different perspective sometimes to what we do, and I look forward to those conversations, um, in the future. But really, what I've been most impressed with is, it seems like every question I have for you, every question that's brought to you at these meetings, you have a, a finger on the pulse of what's going on, um, you know, at the, at St. Pete College, whether it's a small, minute detail, uh, or something larger. You get the big picture, you've got everybody moving in the right direction, from what I can see, uh, and it's, it's outstanding.
I'm just excited to see the redevelopment plans for this campus.
Hey Nathan, I would, uh, Mr. Stone, if I had one thing-
That includes the high school.
Oh, yeah. I would add one thing, now, I did say, you can, you will challenge him, that doesn't mean he'll always agree with you, so.
Understood.
All right, I'm gonna have to leave at this point, so, uh, Ms. Westine, if you'd kinda take over with the agenda?
I will. Student success and achievement. Greetings, welcome, good morning.
Good morning, members of the board, Dr. Law. This morning, Dr. Carragio and I are going to share with you the spring two thousand sixteen course success rates. There's some good news here, and there's opportunities for improvement, as you'll see. First of all, a definition of, of the success rates, it's the grades of A, B, and C divided by all the grades you see there in the denominator. And you see that we've had, over the course of the last two years, a steady improvement in the success rates. There's some more good news in that there's approximately seventy, uh, dual enrollment courses taught in the high schools where those grades have not yet posted, they'll be posted later this week or next week. And those, uh, success rates tend to be higher than average, so last year, we actually, when those grades posted, we saw about a point-six percent increase in the overall, so we should end up right around seventy-seven percent success rates, uh, for this term. This slide and the, uh, next two slides, we're gonna dig into, uh, looking just at first-time in college data. In the spring of two thousand sixteen, there were twelve hundred, excuse me, twelve hundred first-time in college students, and you can see that we had a one-point-four percent increase in that cohort over the spring of, uh, two thousand fifteen. If we look at gender, uh, we saw, uh, more of an increase in our male FTIC students than our female FTIC students. And then as we get into ethnicity, we start to see some spreads here. So, uh, at, black, African-American students, um, the success rate went up to fifty-eight point five percent, an eight percent increase. However, the Hispanic student population for FTIC went down by four percent. And there's some, uh, as I mentioned, areas where we need to improve, and certainly this is one. We've seen this declining trend now for a couple of years with Hispanic students. And that spread widens as we look at ethnicity by, uh, male students. So African-American male students actually went up sixteen percent, uh, the success rates, to fifty-seven point two. Still not where it needs to be, when the overall success rate, uh, for FTIC's at sixty-four. So we still have much more work to do there, but, um, we had a marked increase from forty percent, uh, last spring. And, uh, the developmental education reform, some recent legislation that went into effect in two thousand fourteen, does have a, an impact on that, and, and Jesse's gonna get into, to more of that in a few minutes. But, uh, where we had some, uh, disappointing results is in the Latino Hispanic male population, where, uh, we have a decline in success rates of, uh, nine-point-three percent. Now, when we get down to FTIC, and we're now looking at a particular ethnic, ethnic group, and we're now looking at males, we're getting into small numbers of students. So I think there's some good news in that we can drill into, uh, these students and find out, uh, what we did right for the African-American students, for example, and what we can, uh, we can identify the Hispanic male students and, and develop strategies to improve those numbers. This is looking at FTIC, uh, for developmental courses only. And, uh, as Jesse will explain, uh, students now have an option when it comes to- And, uh, as Jesse will explain, uh, students now have an option when it comes to dev ed. Uh, and they can take our recommendation if we predict that they need developmental education, or they can choose to go right into a gateway course. So, these are the developmental courses, you can see that overall for FTIC and, and this group of courses, we had a one point five percent increase. Uh, you see the male students had a seven point nine percent increase. And we've done a lot, I think, uh, to engage our male students in general, so I'm happy to see that increase. And it's out, actually outperforming the overall FTIC population. Uh, females went down five percent though. And then, again, we see a spread when we start looking at ethnicity. So, the African-American male, I'm sorry, African-American FTIC students went up almost eleven points, and the Hispanic students, however, went down almost five points. And then, look at the spread when we look at just the male students by ethnic group. Uh, African-American males went up thirty-one percent, they're now outperforming the overall FTIC population. I was, uh, speaking with colleagues and, and trying to get a handle on some of that, and was certainly, we've, we've got more, um, research to do, but the, the feedback that I'm getting is that, uh, these students are more engaged in on-campus events, clubs, and activities. Uh, however, look at the Hispanic male population, it went down twelve point one percent, and it's sitting at forty-four percent success rates. Again, the ends are small. One of the things I did, uh, prior to this meeting is I looked at, um, our Smart Start, and the students that were engaged in Smart Start, and I'm finding that the students that were successful in developmental education, almost unanimously, they were successful in Smart Start. The students that were not successful in developmental education, about half were successful in Smart Start, and half were not successful in Smart Start. So, that's a leading indicator that we can, uh, in the fourth week of classes, we know that that student's not successful, and identify who these students are, and begin to outreach. And then, lastly, the gateway courses, again, these are, these are, uh, high enrollment, typically first-year courses, uh, your Composition One, Biology, Ethics, uh, and, uh, again, some of these students that we predicted needed to go into developmental education chose to go directly into a gateway course. And again, looking at some of the research, we found that, uh, with the Hispanic students, uh, especially Hispanic male students, only two out of ten that we predicted needed developmental education actually took our advice. Eight out of ten went right into a gateway course. Whereas, all other populations, on average, four out of ten, uh, took our advice, okay? Uh, so there's work to do on the front lines in terms of how we're engaging those students, uh, when they come to us from the beginning. Uh, so you see, overall, we had a point six percent increase, um, in the gateway courses. Male students, again, outperform the female students, um, two point four percent versus negative two percent. Uh, the spread there is, uh, again, evident with, with the African-American and Hispanic students, and it's even wider when we look at the male students.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, so, Dr. Renard mentioned the Senate Bill seventeen twenty, I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. Um, some of that's historical, it started, uh, became effective in January of, uh, twenty fourteen. Uh, but I'll talk to you a little bit about what we do, and then share some of the data, uh, that helps shed some light on some of the information that you just looked at. Um, essentially, the legislature put Senate Bill seventeen twenty in play, which allowed students to have choice in terms of participation in remedial education. Uh, I won't get into all the, the nuances associated with the legislation, but for practical purposes, essentially, anybody graduating school, high school after two thousand and seven, uh, became exempt from a traditional remedial education process. So, they had the ability to choose whether or not to take a, a test, an assessment test, that for students prior to that are more historically required to participate in, a college readiness test. And regardless of what that test score is, or they choose to participate, they have the option of whether or not to participate in remedial education. So, um, what we did in reaction to that is we built a prediction model, and we did that to help serve students, um, to give them the best possible information to make a decision when they choose, chose to whether or not go into remedial education or not. Uh, and this prediction model essentially has three different levels, likely college-ready, developmental education recommended, and developmental education strongly recommended. Uh, and I'm gonna refer back to that, that, uh, graphic up there you see top, that's actually information we provide our students now as they're registering classes. So, when those students are recommend for dev ed recommended, or dev ed strongly recommended, we let them know what the probability is they're gonna be successful based on, on peer groups. So, I'm gonna go through each of the three areas and talk about, uh, the three levels of the hierarchy for, um, developmental education readiness, but I'll start with math, just to, to explain some of the detail. Uh, essentially, if you start on the, um, uh, math recommendation side, what you're gonna see is there are two courses there that we consider gateway, or entry-level math courses into the curriculum. Those are MAT ten thirty-three, which is intermediate algebra, and MAT eleven hundred, which is a quantitative reasoning class. But that's essentially where you start in gateway when you're college-ready. Down below that, you'll see your developmental education courses, and we have multiple levels, multiple options that exist in that area. Uh, these are the success rates that we saw, percentage of A, Bs, and Cs for all FTIC students. You can see it's fifty-four point six percent for gateway math, it's sixty-six, sixty-three point three percent, uh, for dev ed for all first-time in college students. And then, we look at our three levels of the prediction model. For likely college-ready, you see there's a hundred and thirty-seven students that we said were likely college-ready, and they had a fifty-four percent success rate in those gateway math courses. Uh, you see there were six there that we told were likely college-ready and made a decision to go hard, and didn't feel as comfortable in the math environment, and shows on their own to take, uh, remedial education, and they had a sixty-six point seven percent success rate in just those courses. Uh, what you see is you move further to the right, uh, is our two categories, dev ed recommended and dev ed strongly recommended. What the highlighted yellow represents is those students that didn't take our recommendation. So, for instance, those were students that, in that, uh, dev ed recommended column, who we said should go into remedial education, were recommended for it. We had sixty-seven students that didn't take our recommendation, went right into gateway courses. Their, uh, success rate was forty-nine point three percent versus twenty-nine that did take our recommendation. And there's a sixty-five point five, and then you can see the relationship for dev ed strongly recommended. I want you to keep careful notice of the ratio, those students that are taking our recommendation and those that aren't. Because as I now bring up the information for writing and for reading, the number begins to get smaller in terms of those students that take our recommendation. We believe this is a social stigma. We believe the reality here, it's easy in an open room with your peers to say, "I have trouble with math." It's not as easy to say, "I have trouble with reading and writing." And even though in this context, we're really talking about college-level skills associated with reading and writing, we because, we believe because of this social stigma, students are choosing to not take our recommendations, even in the face of putting data out there that explains, uh, what the probability is. Uh, now, there's another way to look at this, and this is really some of the focus that has to do with the legislative perspective, and some of the research that they use with the Community College Research Center. And that was by putting students' feet to the fire, by them jumping into these gateway courses. At the end of the day, a higher percentage are gonna make it past it and be successful. And we're still really analyzing and understanding that data, because it's really been only, you know, a year or so that we've had this data to look at. Um, what we are noticing is the numbers are starting to come closer when we look at the, um, those that we say are likely college-ready, and then the recommendations, you see it getting very close when we look at reading. We also believe that's impacted because we've changed the things that we've done in the gateway courses, because we realize there's a higher percentage of students coming in that aren't college-ready, and we're creating strategies, and the faculty are working and changing some of the dynamics in the classroom, and to support systems outside the class to help those students be successful. Any questions on the prediction model outcomes? Okay, so, just in summary, uh, you see the point three percent increase, um, it's really hard to move the needle at the high level. You know, with all the things that we do, it's really hard to move it, and that's why you see s- small changes, but the good news is we're seeing continual positive changes. And as Dr. Renard mentioned, that number will increase as those dual enrollment students in the high school, their grades come in, their success rate is typically close to a hundred percent. You know, they're pretty much getting A, Bs, and Cs in all those classes, those are high-achieving students to begin with. So, we'll see that number go up. Uh, first-time-in-college students, one point four percent increase the last spring. Uh, when we look at developmental education, it was one point five. Uh, you can see, we talked about the, the relationship with our black African-American students, we're seeing big gains. We're recovering a lot of the downline we did after, um, twenty fourteen with Senate Bill seventeen twenty. Prior to that, we were on a, a really high trajectory with all the work that we've done on the college experience. And when you look at the success rates three or four years before, you see this very positive trend line. When Senate Bill seventeen twenty happened, we saw a decrease, we've made up about half to three-quarters of that gap, and hopefully, we'll continue moving in a very positive direction. Uh, but we're gonna work on trying to identify some of the, the research perspective associated with the decline in Hispanic students. Uh, gateway, again, we saw the, the increases there. Uh, the thirty-one percent, that's a big jump, again, the caution, it's, it's, it's a fairly small, and we're talking about a hundred, a hundred and fifty enrollments. Uh, still, we're very happy with that increase. Uh, and then, the flex placement students perform better when they take our recommendations, and we'll continually find ways to support them when they don't. Any questions?
I, I have one question, and this is great information. I mean, I can't wait to see what happens as we track this for years into the future, uh, how we can tweak things to make this even more effective. But, um-
Thank you.
When you, uh, used the prediction model, you said you look at, at prior performance, is that high school grades, uh, is it GED?
We're, we're looking at, um, unweighted, uh, grade point average they would have in high school. We're focusing, depending on the, the discipline, we're focusing on specific courses, so we might look at college algebra in high school and what the grade was. Uh, there's some interesting things that we found neat correlations with. Uh, for instance, when we look at reading and writing, there's a high correlation with foreign language. Now, you typically wouldn't say foreign language is gonna help you read and write better, but we find that students that take a lot of foreign language typically, you know, it's a correlation, it's not causal, but there's a correlation there with those students and them being successful, so we've included that in the prediction model.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair, I'm glad to see that the African-American group made gains, but I'm, I am concerned about the Hispanic group. We cannot leave that group behind. Uh, I understand that, um, uh, by listening to you both, and by the way, it's a very excellent presentation. By listening to you both, it sounds like we have shored up some groups on campus that are helping the African-American students along. Is there a way to do the same thing for Hispanics and, uh, Hispanic students? I mean, um, it, 'cause I, I do see a higher number, Dr. Law, of groups on campus that deal with minority women, African-American men and women that are propping them up, they have a resource, uh, kind of to go to. Dr. Hogan and some other folks are dealing with, like, women on the way, and those kinds of groups, where they have a resource to go to if there's an issue for them. I also, I mean, we have a huge Hispanic population, especially on Clearwater Campus, and it's growing on, uh, campuses in St. Petersburg. So, I'd like to make sure that we're doing some of the same things for them as well. I know that, and let me just say this, I know that, um, we specifically look to help African-Americans a lot, but Hispanics especially, sometimes, this is the first generation of English-speaking folks that are in college, not just first-time in college, first-time English-speaking, that are coming through high school without a lot of resources. The parents or grandparents who are raising them are speaking Spanish at home, and so, that transition for them, it gets to be even harder, right? Dr. Law, I mean, you've seen that before. So, I just wanna make sure that we're not leaving them behind, 'cause that is a very, you know, we need to, we need to push everybody along equally. While some groups need more help, and they have to have more resources, that's fine, but I wanna make sure that we do that.
Madam Chair.
Excellent point.
Mr. Givens, yes, uh, Dr. Williams shared with me last night that Stan Vittoto is, um, consulting with Maria Edmonds to, to develop some strategies to help these students. Again, the good news is, is the ends, the numbers are not unmanageable. So, uh, take, for example, the Smart Start, we know if they're not turning in assignments in the first, second week, we can go after them.
Yeah.
How many students are we talking about?
When we get down to, uh, Hispanic male for FTIC, we're, we're talking fifty, sixty students.
So, we might be talking about a hundred students reaching out individually and saying, what happened?
But they need the most support.
Right.
Dr. Renard, just so the other board members, the new board members will know who Maria is, 'cause you said Maria Edmonds, but they don't know.
Maria, I'm sorry, Maria Edmonds is a former associate provost here at this campus, uh, Hispanic, and very involved in the Hispanic community.
Any other questions? See, the, the only comment I would like is I would like an equal to my nerdy self and statistical self. I think that actually reaching out and picking up the phone or fi- or scheduling appointments, you know, we, we have lots of fabulous tech toys, um, but I think that there's nothing more valuable than a human being reaching out saying, "Help me understand why this didn't work for you, and what can I do to help?" So, that's my only last comment.
I agree with that.
Thank you, though.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, moving on, B, finance and budget. Ms. Hunt?
Good morning, Ms. Vice Chair, board members, and Dr. Law. This morning, I'm gonna present to you the monthly financial report, and also give you an update on our sixteen-seventeen budget for some of our other funds. So, first, looking at this fiscal year revenue, our tuition is at about fifty-five million, where we're at ninety-seven percent. Our state appropriations are coming in as expected. And then, towards the bottom, we see our fund transfers in, we're starting to see those transfers come in for this fiscal year. So, we're at three point five million, and our overall revenue is at eighty-five percent. Looking at our expense, overall, we're at eighty percent of our expected expenditures, which were two percent below where we expected to be. Our fund balance at about six point seven million dollars, this is where we see our summer tuition, and then we'll start to prepare for fall, so we'll start to see that fund balance decrease to a balanced budget. So, last month, I came to you with some budgets from some of our other funds. One was our auxiliary fund and our capital construction fund. This morning, I wanna present to you our student activities fund and also our scholarship fund. So, our student activities fund is our fund two, it is a restricted fund, which means the allo- is allocated to specific purpose. So, four point seven million dollars is available funding, this is solely funded by student activity fees. When Dr. Law came aboard, he wanted the students to not only have a voice in the budget, but also to prepare the budget. They prepare a budget of twenty-five percent of the four point seven million, which is one point two million. They present that budget to Dr. Law and Dr. Williams, where then they approve that budget. During the fiscal year, the students actually come back with a presentation where they give us updates on where the spending, how they've been spending the money. Then we have our athletics budget at one point two million, and two point one million for campus-based support for students and activities, a contingency of a hundred and fifty-two thousand. So, now we have our scholarship fund, which is our fund five. About four percent of this budget, of this sixty-five million dollar budget, is funded by our financial aid fees. Fifty-four million is for our federal Pell and our S E O G grants, which is our supplemental educational opportunity grants. The two point seven million that comes in from our financial fees goes out to scholarships. Then we have six point nine million for our State Florida scholarships, which is mostly our Bright Futures. And one point seven million for our foundation and other scholarships. Some of those other scholarships would be that study abroad scholarship that I mentioned last month that was funded by auxiliary. This fund is essentially, we get money coming in, and it goes out to the students for aids and scholarships. So, we have a budget, um, zero. So, in your packet this month, you received a memo for updates on our fees, and I just wanted to highlight a few of those. We would like to, we're asking for approval to eliminate our graduation application fee of thirty dollars, to add a transcript fee of five dollars, and also, updates on our lab fees. We're actually reducing twelve of the fees, the fee amount is reducing, fourteen of those fees are being deleted. And out of those, one of those deletions is our O M P program for our upper, uh, division. It's actually being replaced with our O M P, which is a lower division, which is a new fee. And that fee is going from four hundred and thirty-five, four dollars to three hundred and two dollars. So, our next step for June twenty-first board meeting is to come back to you with the final funding priorities, and also for approval for our sixteen-seventeen budgets. Any questions?
I have a question, Dr. Law.
Madam Chairman, I wanna focus on the fees for just a second, if, if we could, okay? Um, the graduation application fee is, has been there forever. During the course of the year, uh, Dr. Renard was, uh, was doing some analysis, and we found that we had literally hundreds of students who qualified for graduation and awarding of a degree, but they haven't, hadn't made application for it. They simply hadn't plunked down their thirty dollars, they, they moved on to something else. Um, clearly, in the day of performance funding, getting them on-board as graduates would be an important thing. So, we talked about what might be the important- So we talked about what might be the impediments, and for a number of them, the thirty dollars is just more than they want to spend for it. Our recommendation is to remove that application fee, anticipate the graduation with students earlier. You're, this semester, you will be reaching the graduation level. You've got everything going. We're going to award you the, your associate in arts, associate in science, whatever it might be, to make up, I forget what, what was that number? How much did that fee raise? A hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty? A hundred and thirty thousand? Simply substitute a one-by-one transcription fee. If a student needs a transcript, charge five bucks, send it on, and it just about offsets over the cost of a year. So those who need a transcript, get it, costs five bucks. It's just a fee that you pay for those who want it. Meanwhile, though, literally hundreds of additional persons go on our record as having graduated St. Petersburg College. I think it's a really good thing to be doing. The other lab fees, Lord knows, you know, the auditors audit these things down to the, literally looking at the, what we spend and what we collect. The reality is, though, we have, again, twelve reductions and we've deleted fourteen fees. I would hope when we talk to our friends in Tallahassee, certainly the governor, this is some, we have made a very constant motion down on supplemental fees, course fees that go with tuition and other things. I bet we have removed a half million dollars or more of student fees by being a lot more fastidious about, one, not raising them, and, two, deleting wherever we could. So all of these, I think, are part of an ongoing pattern that we, we work very hard to, to work on behalf of students. So I recommend them to you.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, I have a...
No, just discussion, it's fine. There's nothing big. Dr. Law, first of all, thank you. We talked about this. I think it's great getting rid of graduation fee. It's just an extra burden on students that's trying to get out the door. I mean, the only question I have is, is the five dollars enough? Because I know most schools have a higher fee on transcripts than five dollars. And so I just want to make sure, if we make it ten, is that going to do any difference? Or the analysis that you've done is five dollars?
Five looks like a good number to me, Mr. Gibbons. That's an offset.
No, I'm fine with it. As long as you're fine with it, I just didn't, I wanted to make sure that that was a number you were comfortable with, that we wouldn't be losing money on the time and effort to get them out.
I think we're good.
Okay.
With that said, having a motion, a second on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to administrative matters.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hunt.
Human Resources Personnel Report. Bueller? Bueller? Okay. I believe that's in our packet? It's not a presentation, it's in action. Do we, do I have a motion to approve the most recent personnel report?
So move, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel report is approved. Moving to construction, we've done. Reaffirmation of St. Peter's College Mission, Vision and Values. You're up.
Good morning again. I'm excited to present this. I'm so often here at the Board presenting data, and I present some things that are really exciting. And this is about, you know, you had a conversation earlier about the culture. This is really what the culture is all about, and we spent a lot of work not long ago. You've probably seen some of these pictures up on our campuses. In fact, if you walked in just now, I think we have one up on the wall right there. This is our mission, vision and values. And we put this up everywhere, and if you're here on campus, you'll sometimes hear people point to it or hear them reference it and point to it and say, "We need to make sure we're honoring this value, and we need to make sure we honor that value." So we spent a long time putting this together. The problem, the information you have there took us literally months to put together and to come up with something that we agreed on as a college. It was our Strategic Issue Council and all the subcommittees that were a part of developing what you see there, and we'll talk about some of the details in just a second. But it was representative from membership across the college. We had students, we had faculty, we had staff, everybody involved in decision. And we made sure we took our time. We didn't rush through it. We didn't want to do something just to have it. We wanted to take our time and put something together. This was last reviewed at the Strategic Board Workshop in December twenty-twelve and approved by the Board of Trustees in, that following January. Mr. Gibbons, I think you were the only board member at the time that was part of the Board when we, when we actually put...
Oh, yeah, when we did this, yeah.
We put this together. So I know it's new, and we'll talk a little bit about it.
It was a good process.
Yeah, it was very inclusive, and it was very meaningful, because we often reference that, and I think that's been a lot of part of the culture that we have today. The goal, we had a college mission prior to that time, but we didn't have a stated vision statement and we had no values. And I often joke when I go and present about our culture and say, "St. Petersburg College had no values before we, this process," and we know that's not true. But we didn't have stated values that everybody could see and reference as we moved forward. And this was an opportunity to do that. So for our mission, these were some of the questions we asked ourselves as we were developing this. What is our purpose? Why do we exist? Who do we serve? And what makes us unique as an institution? And then in terms of the vision, it was really about the what, where, who, you know, what do we want to do as we move forward in the future? How do we use this to drive the change that we have? How do we become the standards-focused institution that we strive to be and that we've moved to ever since the time we've created this? And then we talk about values. We ended up with thirteen that were really important for us, how we all work together. So some of the background why we do this, the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, you've heard about accreditation that we work under, they require that we review the mission statement periodically. They don't require that we have a vision of values. We've done that on our own. But we've kind of operationalized that as every three years that we want to go ahead and review this process. So here's our vision statement, and I think we've got handouts that we can give everybody with some of the detail. But our vision statement is, "A great college transforming the lives of our students, of our communities and of our employees." And we spent a long time, it was interesting, the three committees all came up with their own unique versions, and it took a little while, but we found similarities across what we created and ultimately agreed on to this vision statement. Our mission is to promote student success and enrich our communities through education, career development and self-discovery. And then we have thirteen value statements, and you have a copy of the value statements there on the handout. It isn't just a statement. We didn't want to just say student focus. We actually spent the time, came coming up with a few sentences that really operationalize what that means for us as an institution. And they're all clearly articulated and laid out there. These are actually two of my favorite. Student focus. We believe students are the heart of SPC. All SPC resources, decisions and efforts are aligned to transform students' lives, to empower them and to finish what they start. We live this. We often sit in administrative meetings, and we may have administrators that say we should do this, we may have faculty that say we should do that. Ultimately, somebody stands up and says what's best for students, and that's what we do. Cultural inquiry fits very well in my world. We encourage a data-driven environment that allows for open, honest dialogue about who we are, what we do, and how we continue to improve student success. Very meaningful, deep about what we are as institution, and I love that that comes from the data side of the house, because typically you wouldn't see data folks writing quite that way. Next steps, we wanted to provide the opportunity for the Board to look at this. Again, many of you weren't involved in that initial process, so an opportunity to kind of reflect on what the information is. We'd like to come back to the June meeting and do a reaffirmation of what we have. And then we've been discussing internally, we wanted to bring this forward to the Board. Ideally, this would be a great first topic item when we meet in December and go through the Strategic Board Workshop to really start with the mission, the vision and values and do a review every December as we move forward. So we wanted to put that forth as a recommendation. Any questions?
Any comments, any questions? I would, if anyone has, I mean, it's a front and a back page. If anybody wants to make a motion to approve this now, we can take one thing off our June agenda.
That's fine.
I mean, the rest of these, including you, Ms. Westall, weren't here when we did this. I don't mind taking a month to look at it and just, because it may be something you want to add. I mean, it was a very long process that a lot of people took a lot, I mean, it really was. We came up with, I think, Dr. Law, like, a whole bunch of statements. I mean, people, it was like a book full of statements people came up with, and they narrowed them down to what they thought was the best thing and brought it back to the Board. So I'm fine with approving it today or giving folks time to actually think about if there's some, because we changed. The college changes all the time. And, you know, there may be something that somebody else can add that needs to be here, so.
That works for me. Then, so the only action that, it says action, but it doesn't sound like there needs to be action.
Yeah, we decided it might be best to share the information and then come back next month. So the action really is coming back next month, and then we can take an action at that time, but to give everybody a chance to review it.
I'm fine either way, Madam Chair. Seriously.
Message received.
Yes, ma'am.
D, Academic Matters, Quality Enhancement Plan.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning to the members of the Board, the Vice Chair, Dr. Law. My name is Dr. Jennifer Haber. I am the Q E C Lead Faculty. I am here with Ms. Heather Roberson, and she is the CEDAL Director. And we are going to share with you our topic selection recommendation and our process for that recommendation for you today. So we wanted to begin by providing a brief overview of the reaffirmation process, which is an important part of our institution. So the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission of Colleges, which we will refer to as the SAC, C O C, requires that we go through an accreditation reaffirmation process. This happens every ten years, and we are hard at work on this right now. There are actually three focus areas that we are looking at. One is the compliance report, one is the administrative unit assessment, and one is the quality enhancement plan. And Heather and I are here today to talk to you about the quality enhancement plan part of this. We are hard at work. We have teams of reviewers, writers, which includes faculty, staff, administrators, and we are working together to create a great plan for the institution. So, a Q E P. A Q E P is a very important process, not only because it's a requirement, but because it gives us an opportunity to look at something at St. Petersburg College. The goal is to come up with a well-defined topic that is faculty-driven and that is related to an issue involving student learning or the environment in which students learn. We want to make sure that we have a broad-based involvement. We have talked to faculty, we have talked to advisors, learning support people, we have talked to alumni, we have talked to students, we've talked to advisory boards, we've talked to you, because we want to make sure that everyone is involved. That's extremely important, an important part. The goal is to come up with one single topic that we can focus on a specific group of people. So we have been meeting since September. Twenty-two faculty members, students, alumni and other people as part of the college environment have been meeting since September, and actually every other Friday since September, to come up with the topic. There are three things that our committee focused on. One, we wanted to look at the stakeholder feedback. We gave surveys to all those population groups, including the advisory boards, students, alumni, faculty, staff, to hear what they thought the greatest area of need was at the institution. We also wanted to make sure that we looked at the population. We wanted to serve a population at the college that was in need. We knew that we could not serve everyone, so we wanted to make sure that we chose that best population. We also looked at a lot of evidence. We wanted to make sure that we could support our objective. We looked at internal data from St. Petersburg College. We looked at nationwide data. We did literature reviews. We examined other institutions, so we have certainly been hard at work. This is an example of our stakeholder survey results. The survey was much longer than this, but we thought we would have you look at one specific question, which was, the question that we posed was, "What is SPC's greatest area of need involving student learning or the environment in which students learn?" You can see here that with thirty-five percent, the institution and college community thought that college readiness for long-term success was the most important topic that we could look at. What's interesting, though, is strengthening writing first year in college experience were also very high with twenty-four and twenty-one percent. And so one of the things that we have found is there might be a possibility for including some of these elements in our college readiness plan. So one of the things we found, too, as we gave those stakeholder surveys, is that we found a couple of different themes. One was that idea of a first-year experience. I talked to a lot of students especially who talk about going to University of Florida or Florida State or U S F, and they say, "We have this really great experience there, and, and, you know, what can we do at St. Petersburg College so that when we come in, we have this experience?" So it's a really important theme, especially with students. We also, of course, know, even looking at the data today, that we need to support those fundamental skills, math, reading and writing. Students need to have those skills to be successful at our institution and as they go into their careers. We also heard the idea of faculty-led communities, the idea of cohorts, the idea of mentoring so that we could have that community at St. Petersburg College. And the other idea is coaching for college success skills. Again and again, we heard students need to be able to have study skills, they need to be able to manage their time, they need to think about personal responsibility and school balance. So those were all themes that emerged from our stakeholder results, our discussions, our focus groups and our dialogues with faculty, students, advisors and everyone else. So Heather now is going to share the specific and focused topic.
Thank you, Dr. Haber. Where we left you in December was the last slide that Dr. Haber was referring to. We had narrowed down to two broad-based concept areas, and our top broad-based concept area was this idea of college readiness for long-term success. So throughout the spring, what we did with our Quality Enhancement Topic Committee was really kind of try to focus that in and decide, okay, what, what themes, as Dr. Haber mentioned, would we like to focus on and what would we like to go forth with as a topic focus? One of the things that came up over and over was connecting students to their academic path through meaningful engagement within the first twenty-five percent of their degree path as a critical need for persistence and retention. Again, this mentoring, as Dr. Haber mentioned, we would like to have a first-year experience that impacts college readiness through faculty-led communities made up of mentors that are faculty, advisors, our learning resources mentors, so our tutors, and then also our peer mentors. And we would like all of this to encompass that sort of first twenty-five percent for those students of their, of their academic path so that we can facilitate these skills that are necessary for lasting academic success. So we decided to even look a little bit further, as we mentioned, on what populations are most at need here at SPC. And we delved into the data a little bit more, and we came up with sort of three critical populations that looked like they were, they were struggling with these college readiness skills. We looked at first-time in college students, so those are the ones that have no prior college experience, and I believe you heard some of the stats on those today with our two thousand and sixteen spring success data. And then we also looked at returning, excuse me, college students. We are calling these our readmit students, so they've been out of classes, out of college for several semesters, and now they're returning. They may have forgotten what they had learned before, they're a little underprepared, and now they're coming back. And then we found that our most at need population is our flexible opt-out students. And again, you heard that this morning when we talked about the developmental ed students that are testing into developmental ed courses. They are not college-ready, but they are going out on their own and they are going against our recommendations, and they're saying, "You know what? I'm going to try these college-level courses." And they're struggling. And the state has allowed them to make that choice, but we don't necessarily provide all the supports necessary to help them through what the choices are that they have made. So as far as our ultimate goal for this topic, we want to support retention and persistence. We want students to finish what they start. So again, engaging them early along that academic path, particularly the students that are underprepared for college, so that we can provide them with the resources and skills to support the long-term academic success so that they can, again, finish what they start. These are three areas that we looked at. This, we may actually focus in on one of these areas. We may not do all three. That's up to the Quality Enhancement Committee to decide as we go forward. But basically, we came up with the idea that these are the foundational skills in our general education areas that are necessary, that students have to get these right so that they can succeed, not only academically, but in their career as well. All right, so we also looked at some of our outside data. Not only did we look introspectively, we also looked, you know, kind of from an outside perspective. And we looked at our Community College Survey of Student Engagement, the C E C data from two thousand and fifteen. And although we scored a little under average on many of the questions or a few of the questions that are listed here, the one that stood out to us the most was the one in the middle here, where only ten point seven percent of our students felt that they were engaged on a regular basis with their faculty member outside of the classroom. And again, you heard in many of our presentations today that student engagement is, is a key factor in student success, particularly with the populations that we're looking at. They may not feel connected to St. Petersburg College and connected to their faculty and the support systems that we have. So we felt that this was a good indicator to us to say, you know, we need to look into that a little bit more and see how we can improve the quality of that engagement for these specific populations. Another portion of the C E C data here was basically looking at the difference between faculty and student perceptions. So as you can see here, there's a, there's a big difference between whether or not instructors and advisors believe that students are engaging in these conversations about career plans on a regular basis. Only about one-third of the students felt that this was occurring regularly, and about half of the faculty said yes. Only about one-third of the students felt that this was occurring regularly and about half of the faculty said yes. Faculty advisors said, yes, we talk about that all the time and the students came back and said, again, no, we don't believe this is happening. So this talks to that motivation early on, that if we can engage them in those thoughts about where they're going to go on their career path, on their academic path, we can engage them early, maintain their motivation and continue that retention and persistence so that they can finish what they start. Okay, our other piece of external data here was our survey of entering student engagement, our CENS data from 2015. And this has to do with effective educational practices with entering students. And basically, this talks about those learning strategies. And you can see the first one that's listed here, we are lagging behind the CENS cohort and then also other top-performing colleges in 2015. Basically, we are not giving students early enough those effective learning strategies that build confidence so that they can ensure that they're ready for college-level work. And again, as you heard this morning with our performance data in the spring, we have some groups here at the college that we could work with to improve that so that they are able to, you know, catch up, if you will, with their peers, become college-ready and then hit the ground running so that they can finish strong. Hand it back over to Dr. Haber so she can look at some of our internal success rates from fall.
Okay, so here is our business intelligence reports. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at success rates and see if there were any trends, especially looking at those populations. So you can see here that we looked at our flexible opt-out students and you can see some numbers such as the intermediate algebra percentage at 43%, the composition one percentage 58.9%. And then we can see our FTIC students in the intermediate algebra at 59%, our readmit students in intermediate algebra 56%. So we can see that these numbers are below the mean at the institution and so we believe that one of these groups, at least one of these groups can be helped with the QEP. So here's the exciting part. The exciting part is what we can do and some of the changes that we can make. So first of all, faculty has to play a key role in this. We want faculty to engage the students inside and outside of the classroom, we want to enhance this. We know that faculty members are doing this, we have some wonderful faculty members here. But as we saw on that CSE data in particular, it's not happening enough outside of the classroom. So we want to make sure that that's happening. We also want to make sure that we improve pedagogical practices. I know that students that I had 20 years ago are not the same students that I have today. So I need to make sure and other faculty members need to make, need to make sure that we're doing something with the right population of students and that we're using our practices wisely. And the third thing, which is the most exciting to me, is really building that collaborative environment. I tell people all the time, when they ask me about my children and say, why are your children so successful? Why are they such good people in the community? And I said, it takes a village, it really does. It takes my parents, my sisters, my friends, my neighbors, Heather, it takes everyone to make sure that they're successful. So I want to build that community here, that we are in that collaborative environment, we're including advisors, learning support specialists, other staff so we can really have that community. And of course, we want students to make some changes as well. We would like them to develop those college readiness skills. We want to make sure that they have those, that they have those basic skills that they need. We also want to make sure that they're able to apply those skills. So when they're in certain situations, they can say, okay, I got this skill, I can use this in a different class. I can use this in my professional career. And of course, that self-efficacy, we want to, for them to think about themselves and to know what their strengths are and what their weaknesses are. That's going to be important in their academic pathway as well as their career ones as well. So, our next steps are, we will continue to be busy, I promise. We will be going to the Summer Institute this summer in Grapevine, Texas. We will be taking seven members of our team to get more information about the QEP. We are also meeting, our first meeting with our QEC, our Quality Enhancement Committee, which has 45 members. They were just congratulated on Monday for being selected to our committee. They will be meeting May 27th to talk about the next steps. In the fall, we will select our external lead evaluator and we will also begin writing our implementation plan. In October or November, we hope to come back to you to report our progress. And in December, we will be going to our annual meeting in Atlanta, Georgia. In May, we will hope to come back again to give you our final draft of the QEP implementation plan. And in August, our report will be due to the SAC COC with our onsite review in October 2017. So that concludes the QEP presentation, do you have any questions? Anyone?
Madam Chair, just a question of, a great report, thank you so much. This is very critical because SACs is like our thing, right, Dr. Law? But my question, Dr. Law, of you is, you know, this seems a little unfair. Will the SACs folks take into consideration the Senate bill that was put on us for college readiness and how we've had to respond to that? A lot of these numbers where we are below is a direct result of what happened in legislature.
The SACs folks, I want to say this gently, they don't care what those numbers say. They care that we are addressing the issues in front of us correctly. That is, we haven't talked them off the table, we've addressed them straight up, we're working on, we have a plan to improve those kinds of things. So their measure is, are you engaged with the core issues that help students learn and move forward, okay?
Those are number, those were internal numbers that stay with us as to why we're focusing on what we are, but.
It seems a little unfair because, you know, Ms. Weston, just honestly, we had to, I mean, we can't put those folks that are not college-ready in the remedial classes like we used to be able to. Now they get this choice and they're making bad decisions even with the data that we give them. So, I mean, we're being held accountable for that on the back end, and that's why I'm asking, is there some way? I get the answer is no, though, but I'm sorry.
No, they get it that we've got a problem, but they can't make the problem go away.
But let me make sure I understand what this is. This is, as of October 17th, we have to prepare a document and provide it to them. And it's, and I'm going to say this, I'm presuming, it doesn't necessarily get graded. Obviously, it gets compared to others, but it doesn't get graded. It's not like someone's going to come down and say, you know, I'd really like you to address your Hispanic male population right now. It's a matter of, as St. Petersburg College, we need to put our best foot forward and say, we've really examined something that impacts our college. And, you know, here, oh, grading facility that gives us a check in our box. Here's the, here's item seven on the, you know. But with that said, it's imperative that we look at these things and it's imperative that we, we, you know, kind of laser-focus on where our weakness is. What's impressive is that we focused on what our weakness is. I'm guessing that there are probably other places where they kind of go to what they do well and they focus on what they do well. And that would be fabulous as well, but with that said, you don't learn from patting yourself on the back. You learn from examining the hard facts, which is exactly what you gave us and, you know, some of those, I think one of the things you said was, well, you know, we're below in a couple areas and I'm going, no, we're below in all of them. I'm like, I can see, I can see the numbers. But I absolutely, I mean, you know, the right, clearly the right people are at the table to make this happen, so I'm very impressed. I'm excited to see where we land on this.
Thank you.
And to your point, is exactly why, it's a public document, number one, and it would seem that we were not doing a very good job at addressing those issues, but we really have based upon what the curveball we got thrown. So I don't know if we, if we put a document in there to tell that, Dr. Law, to make sure that they follow.
That actually, that becomes part of our narrative, that becomes part of our story.
That we submit to SACs at the end, so they know that prior to we were here, the legislature, okay.
And that's part of our, I don't really want to say justification, but that's part of our evidence to say this is why we need a quality enhancement plan that addresses X, Y and Z. Where we would run into trouble, as you mentioned, was if we were to ignore that. If we had all of this information and said, no, we want to focus on trees and birds, I don't know, trying to pick something that's not controversial. And we agree with that internal perspective that is so necessary as part of the formation of the QEP, then we run into problems. But we most definitely will acknowledge that as part of our narrative and story, so.
Perfect, thanks.
Anybody have any other questions?
I'm good.
Other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to compliment the work that's been done. They have been dutiful, meeting with everybody who has an interest in this, they have delivered themselves to exactly the spot that we would hope. Thank you for the work, we really appreciate what you did. Sabrina Crawford is the third member of the group and Sabrina had a family issue, couldn't be here today, but be sure you recognize our words to her too, so thanks.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I remember the last book we submitted to SACs was like this high.
Yeah.
It was like three or four books, it was kind of crazy.
Moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone have anything that they want pulled out? Going once, going twice, I'm seeing motion from the president?
No, I'm signaling my staff.
Okay.
So move, do we accept the entire consent agenda?
Do I have a second? Having a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That unanimous, consent unanimously passes, we've done evaluation. Public access un-agenda items? Is that a, is that a nun? There isn't a nun after that. Proposed changes to BOT rules manual, nun, president's report.
I have a handout, thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Rebecca is handing everybody a brochure that we put together in response, Madam Chairman, to my comment, my meeting with you, okay? You asked that we prepare ourselves for our meeting with the governor. And I thought putting something together that we can send to the governor's staff before the meeting to indicate how much work we have done on the topic of workforce development would be a really good thing to do. We have, of course, all the information and spreadsheets and everything else, but I think this is a way to portray what we've done. You see five or six different areas, the numbers are all strong and positive. If it's not what you want or if you need more, please let me know. With your okay, I'm going to go ahead and see who in Tallahassee might have interest in this before we, before we get to the meeting. It wouldn't hurt my feelings if the governor was aware that we had done literally everything he's asked us to do in the area of workforce development.
This, my apologies for losing control here of the meeting because I'm looking and reading. Pardon?
I think it's a great document, I had the opportunity to read it already, it's a very good document.
The only thing I would add to that is a, what are we, a 77% success rate or 76%, whatever our number was? I would put that on a giant red stamp right on the front.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Does that talk about our, do we have any kind of information on salaries upon graduation?
Yeah, we have.
Is it in there? Obviously, I got handed to it, so I haven't.
I don't see it right there, you know, we're at the top of the heap on salaries, so let me see if I can get that in there, okay?
Because obviously, none of us are here.
Good.
For rainbows and butterflies, we all have mortgages to pay. With that said, Mr. President, do you have anything else since I jumped over you? Next meeting, June 21 at the Epicenter, customs check-in is not required.
8:30.
And with that said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Having a motion, we are adjourned.